...are vital to this city. They continue to serve us in many ways, and we look forward to working with them in all avenues in the future. We ask for, again, tonight, for a special blessing for those in our military, especially those serving in foreign lands as they protect us and our way of life. And we also ask for your blessing upon our public safety personnel who serve us here within our city every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, young ladies, how would you all like to go? Thank you, girls. All right, we have a couple of special presentations this evening. I'm going to start with what we always like to do is if we have new employees within our city, that we introduce those to the public so that as you see them riding around town, you know who they are. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce a couple of our new staff members, both members of our library team. Ginny Wolf. I didn't see her before. I'm hoping she's here. There she is. Please come forward.
Come on up. We like to see you.
Jessica, you can come forward, too. Ms. Wolf, right here. If you'd just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you do for the library, we'd appreciate it.
They didn't tell you that you were going to have to talk, did they?
No, they didn't. I'm a recent matinee of the Pecosin City Public Schools. I worked at the elementary school, last 10 years in the library, eight years before that in special ed.
Great. Hey, thank you, and we look forward to seeing you over there in the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
And Susan Mercer? Also with the library. And Jessica, it's nice to see you as well.
You were just up here just a moment or so. You've gotten positions very fast.
I'm Susan Mercer, and I'm very happy to be working with Jessica at the library. I worked for 28 years at the Bartholomew County Public Library in Columbus, Indiana. I was head of reference and adult services there. And in 2004, we moved to Virginia. So I have been in Virginia for about 10 years. Our daughter got a job at Christopher Newport University, and we had to come along. And I worked for the Norfolk Public Library for the last 10 years as assistant director for the system, public services manager. I retired there in July, and I wasn't ready to give up libraries altogether. So lovely lady took a chance on me, so I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm standing. Okay, the next presentation is one that the fire chief is going to give us. And Fire Chief, as you come up, I'll kind of introduce what we're trying to do here. All right, so there's been a lot of conversation out there on, as I call, social media, and not always the best place to get information. So what I wanted to do is not interject anything more, but basically hear it straight from the guy who's in charge of the fire department. Basically, to talk about the fire department as it stands today, its rescue capabilities, how you do things with the limited amount of resources that we're able to provide you, and what the citizens can look forward to. So Chief, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
And appreciate, looking forward to your talk.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk about our fire rescue department and the different organizations within and outside the city that respond seamlessly to provide the absolute best service we can for our citizens. Additionally, I'll talk about our prevention and education program, our training program, and how we respond to emergencies. I'll tell you a little bit about our past difficulties obtaining fully certified employees and what we, you, the city, have done and are now doing to attract qualified employees. Additionally, I'll talk about our current level of staffing and what we're doing to improve those levels. I'll talk about how our volunteers augment our response and what they do to benefit our operations and the community. And last, I'll talk about our automatic mutual aid and the continual need for these services as we increase our staffing levels and how this aid provides for the safety of our personnel, our citizens, and will help us in our next ISO review. Our prevention and education program includes efforts from both the career staff and our volunteers. These efforts include classroom talks and demonstrations, Fire Prevention Week displays, our fire inspection and fire prevention incident survey program, and safe house displays at various local events, just to name a few. Our inspections program is staffed by three career inspectors, one on each of our three shifts, and two volunteers who are certified inspectors as well, and augment our program when available. All five carry the Inspector Level 2 1031 certification through the Department of Fire Programs, and our fire inspectors are under the direction of a battalion chief. And I myself am also a Level 2 1031 certified inspector since 1988. The York-Pecosin-Williamsburg 911 Communication Center is key for our success in any emergency response. Keep in mind that this center is a model for communication centers across the U.S., and the concept of consolidating is saving communities millions of dollars a year. We currently have the most up-to-date communications equipment, to include the mobile data terminals that we have in our vehicles. In the past, on-scene tactical information needed to make the best decisions was minimal at best, but today, we have this information at our fingertips. We continue with our Police First Responder Program, and Chief Bowen is going to talk a little bit about that at the end of my presentation. He'll give you more details. The first responders are police officers that have obtained their EMT certification and while on patrol in our city can respond to calls for EMS and often arrive on scene first to provide basic care until our medic units arrive on scene to provide advanced life support care if needed. These first responders also help with preparing a patient for transporting and lifting assistance as well. Once dispatch receives a call for service, they gather the necessary information and notify our staff, usually within 30 to 45 seconds. Although you may stay on the line longer given additional information, we're already on the way. That's because we have two dispatchers, one that gathers information and another one that will dispatch us once enough information has been given. And we continually receive updates through the whole emergency. You have placed stations in the eastern and western end of the city, providing us with response times that's less than five minutes to 90 to 95 percent of our city. Our engine operators are assigned to piece of apparatus at the beginning of each shift. Our firefighters are given assignments as well, so everybody knows what their tasks are when they get on scene. All of our career staff, including myself and the deputy chief, is cross-trained in EMS, and EMT certification is the minimal accepted level for career staff, as is firefighter Level 2 for interior firefighting. We currently have eight EMTs, 15 EMT intermediates, and nine EMT paramedics on our staff. Our career staff receives a minimum of 20 hours of fire training each month. That training is composed of classroom as well as hands-on training. All of our training hours are reported to the Department of Fire Programs, and we keep internal training records as well. EMS training is also provided so that each of our employees can receive their required certification hours while on duty. And these hours are reported to the Office of Emergency Medical Services, and we maintain internal records as well. Our Training Officer is certified to conduct all in-house training for both fire and EMS training is under the direction of a battalion chief. Our current staffing levels are 28 career firefighter EMTs, not counting me and the deputy chief and our office manager. We have three shifts that work a 15-day cycle, five days on, six days off. That's a day on and a day off, a day on and a day off, for five days, and then six consecutive days off. With 28 personnel, this provides us with one shift with 10 personnel and two with nine. This shift with 10 represents our latest effort to increase our staffing levels with a three-year goal of three shifts of 10 and a minimum staffing of eight. Tonight, the manager will request that you authorize him to fill one of the federally-funded positions that we applied for but were not successful in obtaining through the latest SAFER grant. This will be the second of the three positions I just talked about. We will again apply for additional personnel once the grant opens again around next September. Once the three-year goal is complete, we will reevaluate our staffing needs and make additional recommendations at that time. Speaking of grants, I want to say that we are very active in obtaining every grant we can get our hands on. We have been successful in receiving two FEMA fire grants, and if you know anything about those, you compete with many fire departments across the United States. We got one for turnout gear and another one for the self-contained breathing apparatus that we wear on our backs. We've received a number of Rescue Squad Assistant Grants, which is a 50/50 grant. We have used to pay for half of a medic unit and recently two LifePak-15 defibrillators. We've gotten four Port Authority Grants, which included communications equipment for the marine operations and personal protective clothing like the cold foul weather gear. Our main fire rescue boat was obtained through grant, as was our last airboat, just to name the larger ones, and we apply for many smaller grants, take advantage of any that we can get our hands on. When talking about staffing, I'd like to make a special point that this is the first time in the history of the department that our staffing levels have reached 30. We're very proud of this, but it hasn't been an easy road. As you're aware, we've had difficulty attracting candidates that have the necessary certifications for our vacancies. This was in part due to other localities having hiring processes at the same time as us, and they would get these highly qualified individuals. We found ourselves with vacancies we couldn't fill. Our short-term answer was to hire trainees and send them to obtain the necessary certs. This can be expensive, but it was necessary. But that's changing. Recently, we added three highly qualified individuals with years of service in the fire and EMS field from surrounding localities. So what changed? Just as we proudly declare to everyone that Pecosin is the place, we began to sell ourselves. We proudly declare that Pecosin Fire Rescue is the place to work. We sell what makes us special, the fact that you work for the department and a city where you're more than a number and where your contribution is appreciated. We talk about the benefits of working and hopefully move into a community that's a safe place to work and raise a family. Additionally, we sell our benefits package that now includes health insurance assistance for retirees. Thank you. Our health insurance is fantastic. Our retirement is calculated on the 1.85 multiplier that you provided. And we've recently added three new designations, one on each of our three shifts, that we call the Master Firefighter, that provides the opportunity for additional advancement. We currently pay a stipend to our intermediates of $4,000 per year and have recently increased that stipend for paramedics from $5,000 to $6,000 per year. I think we're on the right road for success. Now, I want to talk a little bit about volunteers, and I want to point out that we currently have 14 of our career staff out of the 30 that came from the volunteer organization. In the last two years, we've hired four of our staff from the volunteer ranks. So how do we integrate our volunteer staff responding to emergencies? All staff that arrives on the emergency scene, whether they're off-duty career staff or volunteers, report to the incident commander and receives their assignment. Some volunteers are certified as pump operators, and they may be assigned to this task to free up a career pump operator to fight fire. This is the most efficient way to augment our career staff with any additional staff, to include automatic mutual aid equipment and personnel. We appreciate and welcome all qualified help, and we have tasks that less qualified members can perform as well. Besides augmenting career staff during emergencies, what other services do the volunteers bring to the table? These volunteers accept donations and fundraises throughout the year, and much of that money comes right back to the community. A few examples of their support includes the dock in the covered boat slip at the end of Ren's Road, a full complement of rescue tools, every thermal imager that the department has ever owned, the Cub Cadet you see at the seafood festival, the brush truck, the tile floor at Station 2, furniture, exercise equipment, TVs, donations to our record-keeping software, and funding medics in whole or in part. Our record-keeping software that they helped to purchase when we added the MDTs in the equipment has reduced our turnaround at the hospital from an hour, hour and 15 minutes down to about 30 minutes. That's 30 to 45 minutes quicker than before and puts the medic unit back in the city ready for response sooner. And this is a huge deal. When you see our safe house at events, it's staffed entirely by the volunteer members. That includes members from the volunteer fire rescue and the ladies auxiliary, and they do an excellent job. Now, I'll talk a little bit about mutual aid. Automatic mutual aid, this is a very important part of our response to large-scale fires and emergencies and key to the safety of our personnel and citizens. A large operation such as a working structural fire or commercial fire requires a lot of manpower. Many tasks must be performed and some of those simultaneously, ventilating roofs, gas and electrical cutoffs, laying of multiple lines of hose, entering the structure, having rescue lines and crews available, what we call our 2NN2Y, safety officers, rehab, and backfilling stations, to name a few. You can easily see that these tasks can quickly tax our staff, and even as we begin to increase our staffing levels, this type of operation will continue, that we will continue to require this additional help. In the last two years, we've answered, I think, about 3,362 calls for fire and EMS. During that same period of time, we received mutual aid 17 times for fire calls, 23 times for EMS. During that same period of time, we provided mutual aid four times for fire calls and 16 times for EMS. So we don't just receive, we do manage to give as well. I'll talk a little about the insurance service organization. This is the organization that rates your community's firefighting capability. From that rating, the cost of your fire insurance is determined. We're using the last report as a workbook to improve our system. Through improvements in communications, training, prevention, and education, and our response staffing, which includes the additional staffing and our mutual aid, we expect to reduce this rating and save our citizens money on their fire insurance cost. We're very proud of our current operations. I think that you can see that we're making great strides to increase safety of our personnel and our citizens that we serve. And now, if Chief Bowen can come up here and tell us a little bit about his police first responders. Chief?
Thank you, Chief. Let me just say, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Mr. Wheeler, thank you for asking me to come here tonight and talk a little bit about that because it's important that the citizens understand that in Pecosin, and to bar from my good friend, the Fire Chief, it is the place where public safety, that term makes more sense than police and fire because we work together so often. Before I talk about how we support medical services, let me just say it was earlier this year where one of my young officers on night shift, in the attempt to arrest a felon who had stolen a car and was in the city, was attacked by this individual and was in a fight and couldn't get on the radio to announce his location. It was members of the EMS service who first got there and assisted. And it's because we do dispatch calls simultaneously over both channels, and that's the first step to our support, is that they know what we're doing and we know what they're doing. It's not many jurisdictions that you go to where medical calls are given out routinely over the police radio, but that's what we do here. That's the first part of the first responders program. We know where they're going and what the nature of the call is. In that vein, we provide an opportunity for members of the police department who have the aptitude and the desire to do medical work to get a basic EMT certification. If they do that, we do pay them a stipend for that, and then they're on the street able to use that skill in a way to support the EMS service because since our guys usually are in the car out patrolling, there's the potential that we may get there even quicker than the fast response times that we have from the fire department. So we have a higher level of care that we can immediately provide while we wait for the advanced life support capabilities of the EMS service to get there on the scene. Currently, six of our 24 full-time members, 16 in patrol, are certified, basic EMTs. A seventh has completed the course, has not passed the final certification test yet. But even beyond that, you know, from the beginning at the academy, they get CPR training and they get basic first aid. So having someone there who has the presence of mind to evaluate and assess the situation, who has the availability of a radio communication to communicate critical information back to the fire department prior to their arrival and to the dispatcher, and to intervene in a way that can provide some level of care prior to the arrival of an ambulance is critical and it's the way that we work together. So we call it the first responders program, but it's just our efforts to make sure that the citizens of Pecosin get the best service possible and the highest level of care as quick as possible by supporting our comrades, our employee, our good friends at the fire department, by trying to get there as quick as we can and help them and prepare the way so when they get there, they can do the things they need to do, and they can get a quick assessment from the officer who's there who can tell them this is what's going on. So sometimes, you know, that's a delay when you're trying to ask questions and find out what happened because it's very difficult to apply some type of care when you're not sure exactly what precipitated the event and what the injuries are. So the officers can do that and ask questions and even get some vital information, so when the medics walk in the door, the officer can brief them, and this is what we found, this is what's going on, and they can, in a very quick fashion, they can start to provide the appropriate services without having to go through that process again because we've already done it for them. So it's about working together. So public safety is the key and as well as much as we can to try to support the EMS services and provide the citizens with that service. The fire department and the EMS service works with us together, and it's truly a public safety effort, not just a police or a fire effort. And I'm very proud to be a part of that, and I think a big part of that success is the relationships that we have between members of the fire department, members of the police department. I think that we work well together. I think it begins with Robert and I setting the example, and I'm proud to call him my good friend and to be a part of helping him and him helping me and working together. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate that.
Chief?
Yes?
I know you've got sitting there the number of first responder responses. If you could share that, please.
Sure. I was looking back. We include this in our performance measures during our budget season, but I'll just go over these numbers real quick, and they're done in a fiscal year format. These are the first responder calls that we actually took as part of the medical information that comes out over the radio. FY 214, we handled 300 of those calls. FY 215, 352. FY 2016, 399. And since July 1st, we've gone to 167 calls. And again, it's just an attempt to try to provide intervention of the highest quality as quick as we possibly can to support the fire department's emergency medical services and to give the citizens a service that we think they deserve and they need, so.
All right, well, I thank you both. You know, I applaud you both. I mean, the way you guys work together has always amazed me. Okay, so are there any questions of council concerning this subject?
I have a couple for the Fire Chief. Just on terminology, you talked about EMTs and paramedics. Could you very quickly tell me the difference, please?
Well, the EMT is the most basic level. The EMT intermediates and the paramedics are the ones that push the drugs and can perform certain functions on their own without direct medical direction from the hospital. There is a higher level of certification. We strive to provide that on each and every call.
Okay, and EMT is?
EMT is just basic level emergency medical technician, yes.
Okay, and my only other, it's more of a comment than a question. Taking the numbers, the number of calls you provided over the past two years and the number of calls you had to get assistance on, that came out to be 1.1 percent that you had to have assistance.
That's right.
So just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other, oh, you've got a question? Sorry.
Do any of our first responders have defibrillators with them?
Yes, we have several of them at the station. They check out and take with them on the road, and those are serviced by the fire department, and they facilitate us purchasing those, so we have the same equipment they have.
And not only do we have that type of equipment in our medic units, but myself, deputy chief, we have them in our vehicles as well, and they are in various locations.
All right, anything else? Thank you, chiefs. All right, next item on the agenda this evening is an audience for visitors, and if there's anybody that would like to make a comment, now's that time. Mr. Brennan?
Kevin Brennan, 17, Robert Bruce Road, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. Mr. Mayor, congratulations on winning your reelection. I also wish to congratulate Councilwoman-elect Jana Andrews, Councilman-elect Thomas Cannello III, and Councilman-elect David Hux on their individual victories in this recent election. Despite my own loss in the election, I have to say that was quite an experience, pretty exhausting as well. Throughout the campaign, it was obvious that each of the candidates was professional in every way and conducted themselves accordingly. The dialogues were always civil and interactions were always above board with no attempt at deception. I feel like somewhere along the way, I made seven new friends. I want to thank all of the city departments for their openness with me and their willingness to share information with me. It is indeed refreshing to know that our city is so transparent. Finally, I thank the citizens of Pecosin for allowing me into their homes to discuss issues of importance to them and for their willingness to listen to my approach. issues of importance to them and for their willingness to listen to my approach to their issues. Finally, I believe the city will continue to flourish on the new council and I wish all the best of luck.
Thank you, Kevin.
You bet, sir.
I really greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Mr. City Manager, my name is Mark Sawyer and I live at forty-six Church Street. I'm here this evening first to congratulate those that are newly elected and will be sitting in city council soon and to thank those who will be leaving city council. We appreciate your service and you will be greatly missed. I know a few of you personally and outside of this room, as well as I know some of our chiefs. Those of you who don't know me, a while back, there was a dinner organized for our police department and our fire departments. It was not something that I did because I wanted any kind of recognition. I made it very clear to Mr. Clemmons when he called up. I did that because I have a huge belief and a strong backing of all of our first responders. I'm an adamant person, I've stayed out of this council room in the twenty-five years that we've lived here for a couple of reasons. One, I'm not politically correct, and two, I'm not real good at talking to folks. So this evening, I have a couple of things I'd like to address. One, Mr. Mayor, first thing you brought up when we had the chief come up to talk about our fire department was social media. Any of you that follow social media will recognize my name and my face and will know I hold no bars when it comes to defending our fire department. I've defended our fire department against people from outside this community and inside this community. I will do so every day. I have experience with that firefighter one and firefighter two. I chose not to volunteer in the city I live in. Now, if you ask why, it's nothing against Buster Ensley or any of the other members of that volunteer fire department. It's the way that this fire department and their volunteers interact. Every municipality has the option to do so differently. I commend Buster Ensley for the work that he's done. There is no doubt in my mind that our volunteer fire department works their tails off, along with our ladies' auxiliary. Without that and the grants that our fire department obtains every year, you can surely bet that we would not have what we have today. The airboat, the beautiful boat, the boxes that we call our ambulances. Our equipment is taken care of because our administration has impressed and instilled into the minds of the firefighters that have been here for thirty-plus years to the folks that are coming off the street. They impress upon them heavily. These guys treat that equipment like it's their own. If you doubt it, go to South Suffolk and go into one of their stations and look at a piece of their equipment. Go back to station one or two and look at any piece of equipment we own. It looks brand-new, like it rolled off the pierce line because they care. In order for us to succeed and keep our firefighters here and to provide and continue to provide them with things that tempt them to come here, we need to make sure that not only is the city council, as the citizens of Pecosin, that we will do whatever it takes. I implore upon all of you, you have that power to make sure that in the future, your grandchildren and my grandchildren have the best that we can possibly have. With that, our volunteer firefighters have a limited number of people who are qualified. Certifications aren't easy to obtain, I know. Keeping your continuing education credits up and your standards can be tough. It's taxing. We all have families and we have jobs. That's why they volunteer. I get that. We can't look at the numbers of our volunteers and expect that of all of them on the roster, sixty or more, that nine or ten are going to show up. I can guarantee you this, volunteer fire department chief Buster Ensley is going to be there if it's physically possible. You go on any of our fire calls or major medical calls or crashes, you'll see Buster there and maybe one or two others, on time, when they're available. That's what we need to keep in mind. Our volunteer staff is when available. It's not you're here, gotta be there. That's not how it works. The second thing we have to keep in mind is when we move forward, I know that our budget is tight. I've watched the EDA. I watched everything that transpired with all the development last year. Don't want to go in that conversation. I can simply say this, this town has to find a way, one way or the other, to bring in some more revenue. We can do that with multitudes of ways, thoughts, and ideas, but we need to do it in a way that appeases everybody. Some people don't want to tear down woods. Some people don't want to do this and do that. Here's the bottom line. We have two beautiful shopping centers in this town owned by two different companies and two different families. I challenge you to go by there any day this week and show me every square foot is filled. We have a shopping center right up the street from this building. It's empty. Three or four businesses that went in there didn't succeed. Unfortunately, they left or closed shop. We need to find a way, if it's the EDA, a community accessory board, whatever it is, we need to find a way to attract tenants to come to this town and stay. We also got this nice boat ramp down here at Messick Point. I'd be willing to bet my bottom dollar that seventy-five percent of the people during the summer that use that boat ramp are not residents of the city of Pecosin. If we charged a minimal fee, let's think about that revenue. That is the second busiest boat ramp north of McGruder. We've got to find ways to portray revenue. We've got to do it in a way that makes it feasible. And I hope this evening, when the city manager proposes that we go ahead and bring this next firefighter on and we appropriate the funds, no questions asked. I'm one of those few people in this town who was scared to stand here and tell you, you want to raise my personal property tax, I'll stand behind you all the way. I'll stand behind you a hundred percent if that means that these gentlemen have the tools necessary and the manpower. Because what the chief won't stand here and tell you because he doesn't want to take and have to get into that detail is when they train these guys, they might have nine on that shift, but that might mean two of them might be in training. So we just cut it to seven, which puts it at four and three. And then we take out the chief and deputy chief for in the administration office monitoring those radios. So we have a medical call goes out on the south end of town, three from there are gone. We have another accident call goes out, those four are gone. We automatically go to automatic aid. You tax your guys. Long story short, nice fire down here on Pecosin Avenue not long ago, huge mutual automatic aid response, huge. We had our firefighters, our paid guys, I don't know how many of you have ever thrown on eighty pounds of turnout gear in ninety-five degree weather with a six-thousand-degree hot fire three feet away from you and had to stand next to it. Thirty minutes is a long time waiting for that pack to run out and they only had thirty minutes to recover. You tax our guys, guys. And think about this, every man and woman that puts on that firefighter's uniform tomorrow will gladly kick through your door, no questions asked, to make sure that you're safe, your pets, and your family. They do this. We need to keep that in mind and we need to find a way, no matter what, to make sure that we hire the best, we keep the best, and we let the best retire without any question of their benefits. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, anyone else? Now, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for council for approval of the minutes and also to modify the agenda. Okay, so let's start with modifying the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, staff request that you consider amending, amending.
Excuse me. Staff request that you consider amending your agenda, the closed session, item I, to add additional sections, citations for closed session, two-point-two-three-seven-one-one, sections one and seven. Section one is personnel issues and section seven is consultation with legal counsel.
Is there a motion that we modify the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify our closed session agenda to include section two-point-two-three-seven-one-one, section one, and section seven.
Okay, motion made in second that we modify that agenda. Any comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, six to zero.
Very good. And then approval of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve those also. Questions or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. First item under new business is a resolution in support of House Bill three-fifty and expansion of the charitable care for citizens not eligible for Medicare or Medicaid. This was a item that we discussed last week, or last meeting, I should say, one last week, to pick up those citizens who slipped through the gap. And Councilman Green, I applaud you for bringing this forward to us. And now this is basically picking something for the council to appeal to the Virginia General Assembly for, to consider on our behalf. So is there a motion to proceed with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution expressing support for House Bill three-fifty as it may be considered by the Virginia General Assembly and expressing support, appreciation to members of the General Assembly to expand charitable care for citizens of the Commonwealth not eligible for Medicare or Medicaid.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve that. Any other comments or questions of council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next item is a resolution redesignating.
On federally funded firefighter approved in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget to a locally funded position and authorizing the hiring of under the position for any one of the, put the cost of money on the switchers. We need to.
Right, Mr. Mayor, not to rehash comments of our, the Fire Chief. However, last year, last fiscal year, we began a three-year plan to augment all of our, each of our shifts by one. One of the positions was approved in last year's budget and has been filled. And the grant application, it was a non-supplanting grant, meaning if you put it in your budget locally, you couldn't apply for the fund. So this is the way we chose to do it, with your consent, and we went ahead and applied for both with the hope that we could complete our two-year goal, our three-year goal in two years. We received notice that we were not successful, so now we're back asking you to go ahead and allow us to move forward with one of those positions anyway so we can stay on track. We anticipate applying for one or more positions in the upcoming cycle, but we'd like to stay on track. As the chief said, we now have one shift, ten, two shifts of nine. Those positions are fully filled, which is, which is a rarity during my time here. And he explained why that was and what's changed. So we'd like to go ahead and add the next one. And also to begin to build a eligibility pool so that when we have opportunities to move forward with the next hire, we've got qualified people who've been through the process and also to allow us to have a qualified pool to pull from, whether we have a retirement or some other type of termination or leaving the city, so that we can stay at that staffing level.
Very good. Is there a motion to proceed with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution redesignating a federally funded fire position approved in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget to an additional locally funded position.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we do that and just to build on why we're able to do this, we are seeing areas of increasing revenue if they are saved and we are very proactive in firing new business. So with that being said, it's hard to do things like this. The other items, I need you to do this.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. The next item is a resolution authorizing a submission of grant application for the purchase and breakthrough of power stretchers.
Mr. Mayor, with the consent of the council, I'd like to recognize Battalion Chief Young and ask him to come up. John has taken the point on this particular grant and is the best person to explain it to you. John and Joe and several people in the fire department really do an exceptional job in looking for grants and this is just one of them.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. I'm here to speak tonight to look for your consideration, your support with this grant project that we're trying to push through for the fire department. This is looking to purchase three new mechanically-powered stretchers and a new power-load system which will, in the short of it, relieve a lot of strain off of our personnel. Some background behind this, in July, on July first of two thousand and fifteen, the federal standard for the restraint systems in ambulances has changed, requiring a new crash-test-certified restraint system. Our current system does not meet these new standards. We have not been given any sort of federal mandate as to when we must make the change, but any new production ambulance will have to meet the new criteria. So with this grant, I'm trying to be proactive and get us up to the new current federal standard well before they come down the line and say we have to do it. The stretchers that we're looking at now are currently used by all of our surrounding jurisdictions, Hampton, New Bernews, York, and Williamsburg and James City County, all use these Stryker Power Pro stretchers. They are capable of lifting up to seven hundred pounds of patient with the push of a button. The power-load system, all of these jurisdictions are now going to. So not only will the stretcher lift the patient, but as you put them into the ambulance, you will push a button and this load system will reach out, clasp the wheels, support the weight of the patient, withdraw the wheels, and you can slide the patient in with one hand. So our staff will have to pick a patient up to put them on the stretcher, but once they're on the stretcher, the repetitive lifting of up and down and loading into the stretcher will be done by machines rather than our staff. The National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health did a study in a large urban EMS system that rolled out these stretchers. In that system, their workers' compensation claims were reduced by forty-one percent. The claimed costs were dropped by forty-nine percent. Their lost days of work were dropped by sixty-eight percent and their restricted or light-duty days were dropped by nearly seventy percent just from the introduction of these systems. Their back injuries were cut dramatically. It's my recommendation that we look forward to replacing three of our four stretchers at this time and save the fourth for next fiscal year when we're trying to do a new ambulance and roll that all into one project so that by the end of next fiscal year, all of our stretchers will meet the new standard. The current cost for these, the stretcher itself, is eighteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. The power-load system is twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. And the installation at an authorized dealer or installment center, three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. We have one of those in York County, so it can be done close to home, bringing the total per ambulance to forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. So the total for this entire project I'm looking to do is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. The grant that we want to apply for is a five percent local match. So of that large figure I just gave you, our local responsibility will be six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Of that six thousand, eight hundred dollars, Stryker is currently estimating that we will get up to forty-eight hundred dollars in trade-ins for our current stretchers. So out of our fire department budget, we may look to be out of pocket about two thousand And if you have any questions at all, I will do my best to answer them.
I was just going to ask, when are you going to put it in and when do you expect to reasonably, when do you expect to reasonably hear back?
The deadline for submission will be Friday, the eighteenth. We will have it in by the deadline. And this grant awards will begin next year and this grant process will run all the way through, even into September, October of next year. As to when we may hear about it, I honestly don't know. It depends on what round we're awarded the monies or what round we are disqualified from it.
Thanks. I'd like to make a few comments and ask a question. First off, thank you very much for your service. And this is just a personal question, but I come from a world of control systems and automatic apparatus. Now, and by the way, you've already done a really good job of selling this from me, from my standpoint, though we haven't got around to voting yet. But for the patient point of view, should we get to an emergency scene and these new mechanically-operated devices fail to work? I have seen all kinds of things that wouldn't fail, fail. Is there still a way to get it loaded into the ambulance?
Every one of the systems has a manual backup that if the battery fails, if the mechanical system goes out, it essentially becomes the same equipment we're operating right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, well presented. Thank you. Is there a motion, council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the request to seek grants for the purchase of three Stryker power stretchers.
Second. Okay. Motion made in second, that we proceed with this, uh, grant application. I think it'd be easy for us to match that. Uh, questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is an ordinance establishing a trust for other post-employment benefits by participating in the Virginia pooled trust fund. Establishing a local finance board, appointing the members of that local finance board, and directing the local finance board to execute and deliver trust joiner agreement. So Randy, you wanna make, uh, some English out of that, or so most people at home will understand?
I will, and I'll ask Teresa to come forward. As she does that, I'll just refresh your memory. In September, uh, you approved the, uh, new program to assist with retiree health insurance. And at that time, we told you we would come back with a series of, of the mechanics behind it, and this is what that is, and Teresa will explain what each one is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, like, uh, Mr. Wheeler said, we did come up with, um, said that as part of funding the plan, we would ask that you join the, um, a trust agreement. And part of that is either we could join on our, we could join a pooled, or we could establish one our own, one of our own. There was, um, significant cost administrative, um, things that we would have to do to establish our own, so we, we are recommending that we join an already established pooled trust. The only one that is offered in Virginia is the Virginia pooled OPEV trust, which is administered by the Melvaco Finance. Um, in order to join the trust, we have to, um, city council has to take two actions. One of the actions they have to take is, um, passing an ordinance agreeing to participate in the trust and then appoint a local finance board. That local finance board, um, would execute the trust joiner agreement and make any investment decisions on behalf of the city. Um, the local finance board, uh, staff recommends be the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer and the finance director, um, here at the city. The next set of actions that I have in the agenda is actually to set up the mechanics of, of, um, funding the trust and the enhanced benefit that was, um, passed in September. The trust is irrevocable, therefore the only thing that can be used, once we put it into the trust, is for health insurance benefits. Um, the investment portfolios that are part, that we are allowed to, to invest in, our money, are extended, are expected to be long-term. They, the, um, they, they're supposed to be for long-term, so we wanna be able to, um, pay for the cost of the benefit throughout the year. So we are recommending that we establish a special revenue fund to do that, and then at the end of each year, basically deposit into the trust account the amount of any long-term liability. So we'll use the special revenue fund as our checkbook for the year, and then, um, the trust as a savings account to make sure that the benefit can be sustainable, continually be sustainable. The incremental cost of the account, of the enhanced benefit right now is $56,740. So what we recommend is we u, we use the, um, unused health insurance cost for fiscal year 16 to fund the special revenue fund, our checkbook, for fiscal year 18. And then at the end of that year, we, um, any leftover, we can, we can put that into, um, the trust. This would leave at the, at the, um, leave $231,300 in undesignated fund balance that we would have in excess of our policy. I think, uh-
Randy, you got something else that you wanted to add, or?
No. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, you have any questions?
I, I do, Gene.
Okay.
Uh, Teresa, I read this, it was, there was a lot of verbiage in there, okay? And it was difficult for me to understand. And so the, the questions I have may, are basic, and, and they may seem simplistic, but they, they're confusing to me. Um, and looking at it, we're tied up with a couple of other municipalities, and we have a AAA bond rating, okay? And when it comes to time to withdraw some of these funds, okay? If another municipality doesn't have the bond rating that we do, or if they get into financial trouble, uh, can they get any more than their share out of it? I, I don't know how that works.
I don't think so. I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think so. But the, the, um, the two localities that actually started the, um, trust, the pooled trust, is Hemarico County and Fairfax, and I believe both of them have triple ratings, all three triple ratings, without, from all three of the agencies.
Okay. Thank you.
But I don't think so.
I think, uh, there was one section in there, Bud, that, uh, addressed that, and it said that the funds can be co-mingled for investment, but each municipality retains their own funds.
I agree with it.
All right, thank you. I, I didn't see that part, which is caused me to ask the question.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Teresa. And then while you're here, so you won't have to get back up.
Okay.
Okay, it's gonna take a little latitude here, but we have an ordinance coming up in just a minute to transfer some money into that trust fund.
Transfer it into the special revenue fund.
Into the special revenue fund to-
For the checkbook.
To move, into the checkbook. So that's what that ordinance is when it comes up, so we can try to not, uh, bring you back up a second time. All right? All right? Thank you. All right. Starting with, uh, the one that's in front of us. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance to adopt trust in other post-employment benefits?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to adopt trust for other post-employment benefits.
Second. A motion made in second, and that we, uh, approve that, sets up the, uh, the accounting method that we'll use to fund that. Questions or comments of council? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And if anybody was, uh, lost, the, the next item under new business is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2017. This is a very simple transfer. It is only for this purpose, and it is only for $56,740. Randy, is there anything else that I missed on this?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion from council to proceed with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2016 and 17 to fund this, uh, retirement account.
Second. A motion made in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very well. Um, next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the school division to enter into contracts for the appropriated 2017 capital improvements. Did I miss one?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. Which one?
75.
Thought we just did that.
Yeah, you did that part of it.
Oh. Ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll, I'll briefly summarize this one. Teresa's here if you have additional questions. Um, I always appreciate this because of the nature of how we do things and how hard other people work. Um, I would just point out to you, and I'm gonna briefly summarize, uh, of the approximately more than a dozen items, uh, we've got appropriating funds from a library donation, re-appropriating state funding, uh, for, uh, for for life in the fire fund, state funding to support the Fire Department, state and federal asset forfeiture funds, $58,000 and $8,000 respectively. Litter control grant from the state to additional police department grants, DMV grants of $7,655,000 respectively. Uh, additional money from the, uh, state, Department of Emergency Management, an EMPG grant, uh, in the amount of $7,500. Uh, there is one reappropriation request relating to schools here of $2,700, but even that is designed to be a match for a state grant. Uh, additional police department donation, a, uh, grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, $2,770. Uh, a couple of items, uh, we sold some scrap metal and, uh, and for approximately $5,600, some old equipment, surplus equipment and vehicles for about $6,800, uh, which we're gonna use, um, to help purchase a vehicle that we, uh, that we need to replace. Uh, reappropriation of some state highway money that, um, we previously put forward, uh, to support drainage projects, a state stormwater persistence grant, an Office of Emergency Medical Services grant for the two life packs that the chief discussed earlier, and a port authority grant for $51,000. Um, having done this in many places over the course of, of my, uh, time, I think this might be the first long one I've ever seen that really didn't have any new appropriation of local money. And with that, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
No. You know, I appreciate you, uh, pointing that out, because it was buried in my agenda. So, uh, questions or comments? This kinda just goes to speak of how active our staff is. Is that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yep. All right. So, uh, I'll take a motion if somebody would like to appropriate all this money.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2016 and 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we, uh, approve this, uh, ordinance? Questions or comments?
Just a comment. You can tell how hard-
Uh, you may wanna-
I'll put your mic down. You can tell how hard everyone works. When you got $5,600 in scrap metal, that's scrounging, that's looking, that's working. I'm serious. That says a lot right there. That's my comment.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, then Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very well. Now the ordinance, uh, for authorizing the school division to enter into contracts for appropriated fiscal year 2017 capital improvements program projects. I see the schools are well represented in the back. Uh, are they going to come up and let us know what they wanna do?
They would be pleased to if you would like to hear from them. I think they'd probably be fine if I summarized it for you.
Okay, I'll be fine.
Um, as council members will recall, as part of the last budget and associated refinancing, uh, council appropriated money for three projects for schools. Two were HVAC system projects, one primary school, one at the high school, and additionally monies to bring the track at the high school up to the current standard so that it could be used for competitive events. Uh, what this action before you does is essentially, uh, allows the school system to move forward, contract and, and manage those projects. Um, the way we've, uh, structured our capital projects, you retain final authority, um, because we don't have a separately designated school CIP fund, which we may wanna talk about in the future. But in the absence of, of that kind of change, we're requesting your authorization to let them move forward, contract that, um, and also to manage that project. That's the most efficient and effective way to get it done, and we ask for your, uh, consent to that. Superintendent, like to add anything?
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay. You got an A, I believe, is what she said. All right. So is there a, uh, motion to proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the school division to enter into contracts for appropriated FY17 capital improvement projects.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we approve this resolution? Any questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Final item on the agenda this evening is a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Planning Commission. Somebody prepared with a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission with the following names inserted. Uh, for regular members on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mark D. Kramer, Melvin L. Emerson, Jr., Constance B. Bassnett, Russell S. Tracy. Their terms will expire November 30th, 2021, and for the alternate, Mark T. Lovell, his term will expire August 31st, 2019. And for the Planning Commission, the name of Bonnie W. Schreiber, whose term will expire November 30th, 2020.
Second.
A motion made in second, that we, uh, adopt this resolution with those names inserted for both the Board of Zoning Appeals and for the Planning Commission. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Comments of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I only have, uh, one thing this evening. Vice Mayor asked me to comment on the status of the, uh, breakwater at Messick. Uh, as you are well aware, uh, the breakwater received, uh, some significant damage with the last storm, and where we are with that, it, the breakwater is insured, but in addition to that, it is under warranty for defects in materials or workmanship, i.e. the installation. Uh, the, the exact nature has yet to be determined from a liability standpoint. Step one was to get a detailed engineering analysis from an independent, uh, qualified engineering firm. That has been completed. I saw that. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but that's the step one. Our insurance company paid for that. Um, so, uh, we will be moving forward, but that, that's where it stands at this moment. Um, step one, get the independent engineering assessment of what happened and what was the cause. Step two may or may not involve us fussing with one or more, more contractors. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Very well. Uh, while I've, while I've kinda got you on the subject, the Little Florida Road drainage project, you wanna talk about that in just a second? Because I know that's the other big thing that people see.
Absolutely. The project is, is going very well. It's on schedule. If anything, it might be a little bit ahead of schedule. Um, approx, as of last week, approximately half of the piping has been installed, and even this week, they're, they're moving on beyond that. Uh, so it's on schedule, and, um, we appreciate everyone's patience. It is going as well as a project of this type can go.
Yeah.
In large part because of our city engineer and our public works construction manager.
Very well. Okay. Comments, uh, council directives? Bud?
Okay, thank you, Gene. First, I'd like to welcome our new city employees, uh, that, that were really welcomed to the city and, and glad to have them. Um, I, I'd like to thank Mr. Mark Sawyer, who has left here, for his comments. He shows, uh, a genuine interest and, and concern for our volunteer fire departments and, and our fire department, uh, for their work and efforts. And he shows a genuine concern that, that he has things that, uh, that can, concern him, but at the same time, he is proud of the efforts of their fire departments and how they respond to it. of our fire departments and how they respond to it. I'd like to thank Chief Holloway and Chief Bowen for their comments, but I'd like to also add my, my thanks and congratulations to the fire department. I understand they've been under a bit of stress here lately. I appreciate all of our city employees, the fire department, the police department, and the city staff. It takes all of them to make, make things happen around here, and we recognize the fact that every one of you are underpaid, especially the volunteers who do it for free. There's been a few times in my past I had to have some emergency medical assistance, and believe it or not, I had volunteers and paid firemen there. I don't think I bothered to ask their qualifications, however, I do know that I've received the best of care. I know that the volunteers work hard to support the fire department. I know they work well, and they work well with fire departments in the local areas, and it goes for the ladies auxiliary that works with them. Not only do their physical efforts pay dividends to our city and help cut the tax costs to our citizens, but their financial efforts for the work that they do to raise funds to help the city also contributes. And so, I really can't thank you enough. You do an excellent job, and thank you for being there.
Vice Mayor.
Well, excuse me, I also wanna congratulate our election winners, all of them, and look forward to working with what will be the new council. Kinda taking on to what Councilman Southall said, I was gonna talk a little bit about volunteers, and I think volunteers in general is what makes this city great, and we have thousands of them. Just drive by any ball field, any, just nearly anywhere in the city, there are volunteers out there tonight, the Brownie Scouts. Well, they can't get here by themselves. There are leaders of volunteers, all the people that brought them are volunteers, just as an example. Second thing we did was library staff. We have lots of volunteers in the library. We have Cert Team, we have the volunteer fire department, and all our civic organizations, just to name a very few. But that's what makes this city great, and I think they've been under some pressure here lately, been sort of bad-mouthed on social media, and I think it's just wrong to bad-mouth any volunteers. I think volunteers just make this place work, and I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Vernal?
Well, I wanna echo the comments that were made about, about the excellent report that was given by the chiefs tonight, and certainly appreciate, I, like most other people, I suspect have had reason to call upon them for a family member for several times, and then I got a free-wired one night myself, as some of you may remember. But anyway, I certainly appreciate their service being here, and it's wonderful. And I wanna congratulate all the candidates who offered themselves for election. Certainly those who won, fine, but just to have people step forward and say, you know, I'd like to serve the city, that was great to see that happen. So, I thank all of them and congratulate them. And one final thing, Thanksgiving weekend, be careful if you're traveling. I have fought that traffic for many years, and I know what it's like, so if you're going someplace, have a great Thanksgiving, but be careful.
Yeah, thank you very much. Buddy?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, remind everybody that the food bank distribution will be next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but the twenty-second, at the Old City Hall from ten to one. The host this time will be the York Precotion Social Services, and they always do a great job. So, next Tuesday, ten to one, at the Old Municipal Building.
Councilman Ayer?
I'd just echo, for the most part, what everyone else has said, and as far as the volunteer fire department and the things on social media, some of it was certainly bad-mouthed, but there were some people that are concerned, and I think those questions, a lot of questions were answered tonight, but it does get back to the aspect, if there's something more you think you can do, volunteer. I'm sure those guys will welcome you, to talk to you, and we could always use more volunteers in that arena. We certainly have several, you know, coaches and different things all over the city, but help out. If you, like I said, if there's something you realize you wanna do a little bit extra, do a little more, volunteer. And talking about Dr. Vernal, I'm almost one down, one to go here tonight, so I know when he went down here and the people got him in and out of here very, very quickly, but I hadn't been a councilman that long, and I'm thinking, wow, this is, this can be a tough job here. Anyway, these guys do a fantastic job.
Well, there you go. It's tough to follow that one up. What I would say is, the fire department does a great job every day. It's not because of us here on council, although we'd like to take the credit for what y'all do. We don't. It is you, and both chiefs and all the staff. And I will tell you that I feel that same way about every department in the city. They all do a good job, and it doesn't matter whether you're going to check out a book in the library or it's the public works crew. I've never seen so many dedicated employees in one city, and I will tell you that I feel blessed to lead that. So, I never take that for granted either. I always tell every other mayor or manager that I come across, when they tell me their problems, ours pale in comparison because of the people, not, not anything else. As I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the public for, for electing me again. I appreciate that wholeheartedly. Know that as I lead, as we lead into the next month, we have the unenviable task of saying goodbye to some of the, one of the best councils I've ever served on, okay? And I appreciate that true team spirit of this council, the fact that we all work together and that, and to be quite honest with everybody, we don't always agree. I know you find that to be surprising, but we do work well together, and I think that's what makes government tick, is being able to talk to each other, to compromise, and I've never seen a council do it better than this particular one. So, I applaud you all, especially the three that will be leaving us, and I know that Councilwoman Crawford is one of those, and she's unable to make it tonight due to a personal issue. So, I look forward to next meeting, kinda talking about where this council has been, what we've done, seeing you off, and then getting to the hard work of bringing the new members on, of which I thoroughly look forward to working with each and every one of you. So, look forward to doing that, but I wanna celebrate this council and then bring on the new one. So, you'll see that in the next meeting, and then we'll see the new council in the first of the year, get y'all all turned over. So, Bud?
One more comment, okay? I left out somebody that I didn't intend to, and that's Volunteer Chief Buster back there. He, he does a great job for us. He didn't have an opportunity to speak tonight, but he's in there with them, and he does a lot of work along with Chief Holloway, and he leads a great volunteer fire department. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. So, now we have a closed session, and I'll take a motion to move to that.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made, and second, that we move to closed session. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you.